Good afternoon, everyone. It's Tuesday, March 12th, and it's 5:00, and I would like to call it over the St. Croix-- meeting of the St. Croix County Board of Supervisors. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As for roll call, I can attest that all supervisors are present, and just to recognize that Supervisor Burning, Fiedler, and Ramberg are joining us virtually. Okay, before we get to the business items, I have three things that I would like to address the board. Number one, it was my decision to not add public comment to the agenda tonight. I kind of see this meeting as an extension somewhat of last week, and much of the public comment has been very consistent, and I didn't really believe that we would necessarily hear anything new, excuse me. Although, I would like to at least acknowledge the fact that over the last couple of days, I've been, probably everybody else, have been overwhelmed with emails and correspondence, and interestingly enough, it's been primarily from people who are opposing the resolutions. So I think somewhere along the line, people started to hear about what we were talking about, and those opposed have kind of came out of the woodwork. So even though they won't have an opportunity to speak tonight, I at least wanted to acknowledge that we did receive a lot of opposition to the resolutions. Second thing, had an interesting conversation with my daughter this past weekend. She happens to be a high school English teacher outside of Indianapolis. So we were talking, I always get great perspective from younger people. So we were talking about refugees, and she said, "Well, gee, there, we have a lot of refugees in our high school, and they're the best students." I thought, "Wow, that's interesting, so tell me more." So basically, she went on to describe what good students these children of refugees are, how hardworking, intelligent, driven individuals they are, and a lot of that comes from their parents, who were the refugees, and making sure that these parents are driving home to their kids so that they under-- or driving their kids so that they understand and appreciate and recognize this incredible opportunity that they've been given. So it was a very real-life example of how well it can work if it's done right. Third thing, a couple of things happened last Tuesday at our meeting that, to me, were very disturbing. First of all, someone was handing out political literature and yard signs and whatnot right here in the building or outside of the building. Just want to make sure you know that that's not acceptable. Leave it in your car. Secondly, the other incident that occurred, there was an individual who happened to have a different point of view than the vast majority of people that spoke last Tuesday. So that individual did not speak but was opposed to these resolutions. After a public comment, as this individual was exiting the building, they were accosted physically and verbally, right here in the building. And what makes it worse is that there were a group of people around this individual who was accosted, and you know what their reaction was? They laughed. They laughed at that abuse. I'm disgusted, and I'm sorry. Not only is that behavior totally unacceptable, it's despicable. And I don't know who these people were, but if I were you, I would be incredibly embarrassed by that shameful and narrow-minded behavior.
Can we look at the cameras?
And I hope that-- I'm sorry, please, let me finish. No, please. No, not now. We will not do this now. All I want to say is I hope that that behavior is not representative of the people that were here last Tuesday, and I'm certainly confident that it's not representative of the good people of St. Croix County. So I'm going to share with you a line from one of my favorite songs. It's a lyric, and it goes like this: "A man hears what he wants to hear and disregards the rest." So my challenge to everyone here tonight in the public, don't be that man. We need to show respect. We need to show acceptance. We have to be able to tolerate differences of opinion so that we can come together as a community. We need to take a higher ground and learn from our differences of opinion, understand differing opinions, and that will result in us being able to demonstrate character and integrity and tolerance and acceptance. So please, people, don't be that man. Don't be that man. We're better than that. Thank you for listening. We're going to take up our first business item, the resolution supporting Wisconsin Senate Bill 916. Do we have a motion? Motion by Supervisor Barkalow, second by Supervisor Carlson. Who would like to get us started in the discussion? Supervisor Leith?
I'm opposed to this resolution for a few reasons. It is adding another process. While I'm in favor of communication, obviously, that's important between agencies that would be resettling refugees in our area, if you look at the bill, there is several other things that are required that would be a burden to our tax dollars. You're basically putting a process within a process that has worked for 44 years, so I'm opposed to it.
Supervisor Carlson?
I'm for the resolution. I looked through the process, and it appears to me that the process is just requiring them following the 1980 law act of informing us. It's basically the NGO has to send out, or the state has to send out information to everybody within 100 miles of the municipalities, and then the municipality needs to put it on an agenda item at a meeting that already could happen, like at the beginning of a county or at a county board meeting. And then the one meeting that will cost is the meeting where the representative from the NGO or the state comes and holds the meeting that's required in it. So I do not see it a whole lot of extra cost, but what I do see it doing is informing people a lot better than the process that is happening, letting them know what's going on, and being more transparent, and giving communities more time to see if they can afford it, if they want to allow it into their community. So I support this resolution.
Supervisor Hanson?
There's nothing wrong with communication. Forced communication, when the federal law already provides for a vehicle for communication, seems punitive as a result of one city manager failing to do their job correctly. The last paragraph from line 13 on page 5 to the end provides something worse than punitive. It provides an injunctive vehicle toward elected officials. Serving in government is already difficult. I've had plenty of people in my face yelling at me when what they're really concerned about is only one issue and not concerned with the well-being of their entire community. It says, and I'm going to just read this to you because you may not have read it, "A taxpayer of a local governmental unit may commence an action for injunctive relief, a writ of a mandamus, or prohibition, or other such legal or equitable relief as may be appropriate to compel compliance with the law if an elected official designated under this section or the governing body of the local governmental unit has failed or is failing to comply with this section." There's several hundred levels of municipalities within 100 miles of Hudson, Wisconsin. Each of them will be compelled to have a meeting and make a Class 1 notice to have that meeting. There's going to be one big meeting here in Hudson that this law requires the county to pay for, something that's not called for under USC 1522. This is adding layers of government, and then, when it's triggered, will cause people to be susceptible to rumor instead of fact, which would come from the normal process of refugee resettlement, because there will be many layers of communication, and if it's not done correctly, there's many opportunities for misinformation to be spread. I can't see this as being good, especially when with those opportunities for misinformation, the result is an invitation for a taxpayer who's unhappy to sue me because they're unhappy. And not just me, you, and you, and you, and you, and you. I would invite our legislators to try again. If they'd like to have a vehicle of communication, I invite it. It's a good idea. But one that ends with a threat against us as elected officials when it's already hard to find people around for office is perhaps something they should try to do better. So I'm going to vote against it. I think we can do a good job and a better job of relocating refugees, absolutely. But they should do a better job of it. They should do a better job of involving the state and local municipalities than this.
Supervisor Carlson?
The law already exists under the 1980 that they're supposed to inform us, and they didn't. This lays out a process on which it can be done. As far as, you know, the injunctive vehicle he's talking about, us being sued, this or that, is only if we don't follow the law, and that's the exact same thing a taxpayer can do if we fail to follow any law, because it affects their rights. So this is nothing different than a taxpayer can do now. If we don't follow a law, they can sue us. So I don't see any things in this that's different.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Lynn.
Thank you, Chair. This is literally an accountability piece that, when the Refugee Act of 1980 was disregarded, when that one city official took it upon herself to start the ball rolling. What we seem to misunderstand is that this is one case that we are aware of. There are likely other cases that we are not aware of. So when we assume that this is the only time this has happened, I think we are erring in a big way. This is an accountability for a process that has already been disregarded, and I believe it needs to be, we need to stand behind it, and we need to ask that Governor Evers signs it. Thank you.
Supervisor Telon.
I disagree. I assume it's, the process has worked because we haven't heard of any other instances in this case. This is just adding layers and layers and layers of government oversight, and we talk about having less government involvement. This is adding lots of government involvement, especially with all the meetings that's required and the timelines and so forth. I'm going to, I'm definitely opposed to this.
Supervisor Shirley?
My view on all these resolutions, especially these two that are supporting legislative pieces, is that that's our job as an elected official, is to handle, most importantly, the budget and then public protection. Those two in combination are probably our utmost priority. And if we're not informed of the things that are happening in our communities, how can we do our job? So that's the way I view these two issues, is that having those, that communication, having that done correctly, is what we-- having that done correctly is what we need to do in order to do our jobs.
Supervisor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm supportive of sharing information and communication. I think that's critical anytime you're doing local planning, anytime you're running a state, anytime you're, excuse me, running a country, but this proposal, this legislation before us, I'm surprised that, to be honest, that this board would consider it in the sense that we often have talked about or we've heard about all the additional layers of government. We've heard about state mandates that make us do things as a county, as a local entity that we can't afford. This legislation, if you look in the definition, okay, local government unit means a city, village, town, county, or school district. So there will be, the legislation requires a process where each of those local government entities are going to have to designate a person who will be a designee that's going to participate on a county refugee resettlement committee that's going to have a specific amount of meetings, they're going to have to do those in a certain amount of time, they're going to file some kind of report or make a recommendation to the local government body on whether they should pass a resolution. I'm surprised, and I would urge the rest of my supervisors here to not put this burden on the rest of, on the villages, the towns, the school districts in our community. We can have a communication as a county, we can have an awareness that potentially refugees are coming, and I think, I think we're all supportive of communication, but this bill places an undue burden on the rest of the local government units in this county. I urge you to vote no.
Supervisor Anderson?
One, this, I agree, even if, let's pretend that the situation hasn't happened before, the fact that this made it through would make it more likely to happen again. Two, I hear a lot of supervisors mentioning, like, you know, like me, I'm usually the guy who likes the government to get out of the way, but this is different. This is us trying to hold larger government entities accountable on behalf of the people we represent. Each of us have a few thousand people. The state representatives have tens, hundreds, millions of people, hundreds of thousands, millions of people under, well, not the state, but congressional people under them. We're the closest contact with a pretty large voice as far as a government entity and all the other localities to, how is us being informed and being able to speak on behalf of our few thousand constituents not a good thing?
Supervisor Van Summern?
I agree. This really, even this last paragraph, sets the rules how it should be followed and makes it much more transparent than other ways, and I think, I think that has to be done. I agree that big government, well, in this case too, if someone had notified us, we wouldn't know that this could happen by an employed employee in a town that's 40 miles, 50 miles away. So I think, I think it's necessary, and yes, it may sound harsh, but that is what we're here for, to protect the people. So I think we have to support it. Thank you.
Supervisor Adams?
Chair, thank you. One area I'd like to look at is the non-governmental organizations. In my mind, a lot of this is about the money. These are tax-exempt organizations. They have money coming in, our taxes from the government, to virtually do whatever they want, and I think there's a lot of incentive for non-governmental organizations to do what they want to keep their livelihood going, and I'm extremely concerned about that. Right here on the State Department website, NGOs in the United States are qualified as exempt from state and federal taxes. This legal status makes it easier for NGOs to operate as nonprofits because they do not have to pay tax on the income funding that they receive. I think that this resolution helps us for accountability, and I would lean to support.
Other comments? Supervisor Carlson?
Just a...
Okay, I'm going to, Supervisor Burning, did you want to make a comment?
Usually yes, but in this case, I'm just fine. Thank you, though, sir.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't look up at the screen often enough, so if either of the three of you need to want to make a comment, please make sure that you wave us down. Thank you. You want to go ahead, Supervisor Carlson?
Yeah, I just kind of want to clear, clarify something. It's clear to me by the emails, and some people are really upset because they think that we're giving stuff to a bunch of illegal immigrants. If the people do come here, or when they come here, they came here legally, and it's not the people that are coming here's fault. They followed the process by us. So it's not, I don't want to see any hate towards these refugees. If they come here, they're legal. They didn't come here illegally, and we'll have to take care of them. It's the process, and our right to be able to say yes or no, that's the issue. They're not illegal.
Other comments? Supervisor Hanson?
When we're talking about money, the county isn't really looking at laying out a huge amount of money for refugees. Most of the money that goes toward the subsistence of these people comes from the federal government for the first five years.
That's not true. Okay? That's not true.
Okay, okay. Please, no comments from the public?
That is, that is, that is a fact, that money, when you read about this in U.S.C. 1522, it's laid out very clearly that they, they provide the funds for these people for the first five years that they're located in your community. The county does not have the funds, nor do they, do they really provide the funds for people when they're, when they're indigent. We don't have that kind of money. It'll come from, for example, food stamps is a federal program. Any other program that takes care of people generally is funded by their grant or a federal program. The county itself, we don't take money from levy funds to take care of people. It's generally taken from other sources. So it's not, it's not going to be coming out of county taxpayers' levy to take care of people if they end up actually needing it. But the fact is, when somebody is vetted as a refugee, they get on their feet within a couple, few years. They work very hard, and they end up being productive members of your community. They don't show up and end up being deadbeats. I worked with a great number of refugees when I was working for USDA, side by side, and they worked really hard, and they're good people. For the most part, I don't know that I see very many of them ending up being criminals or whatever. Those are illegal aliens that you see crossing the border. We're talking about people who've been vetted, refugees, who are coming, wanting to be participants in our community. I come from a refugee immigrant family, Norwegians, so this real raw hatred toward people who come from other countries kind of stings. And if we're going to, we're going to start just prohibiting people from coming, what happens when the economy grows? You need people to grow with the economy. You need more people. People aren't having as many children as they used to, so how do you, how do you grow the nation if you don't grow the population? That's just an aside, but we talk about money, nonprofits. There's, there's a lot of nonprofits that I'd like to reform, you know? I don't think we'd have the medical desert in the central part of this, part of this state if we didn't have nonprofits that were making a profit and then decided they wanted to pull out. So I had to squeeze that in, too. I think you're right. Supervisor Adams? So there you have it.
Other comments? Supervisor Carlson, you're using up your comments, but it's okay, go ahead.
Thanks for your indulgence. I was in Eau Claire when World Relief gave us, and they were very clear, and that they were clear for a change, they said 90 days, not five years. And every other place that refugees has gone in, it has cost county money after the 90 days. So it's not true that everything's paid for by the federal government for five years. Kind of as an aside, even if it's paid for by the federal government for five years, that's still taxpayer money also. It's not just money that comes from nowhere. So there is a cost, although it's spread out around the whole country then, but, so...
Any other comments? Oh, Supervisor Van Summern?
Thank you, Chair. I looked at, back at my notes from our meeting a week ago, and yes, Mr. York, first of all, said the support, they supported them for five years for refugees, there was support. And then, then when pressed on that, he said, "Well, we give support for the first year as per wages, and we give service, medical services and things like that for the next four years, but they don't continue to support them monetarily." And so that's what Mr. York said last week, so I think we need to keep that in mind, too. Thank you.
Any other comments? I think we're sensing we're ready to move ahead with a vote on this resolution. So the, we will have a roll call vote on the very first resolution supporting Wisconsin Senate Bill 516 related to refugee resettlement.
Supervisor Lind?
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Reluctantly, yes.
Supervisor Leef?
No.
Supervisor Cook?
No.
Supervisor Adams?
Yes.
Supervisor Burning? Supervisor Otino?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fiedler? Supervisor Osness?
Yes.
Supervisor Counter?
Yes.
Supervisor Hanson?
No.
Supervisor Shirley?
Yes.
Supervisor Teljon?
No.
Supervisor Carlson?
Yes.
Supervisor Barkalow?
Yes.
Supervisor Swanepoel?
No.
Supervisor Van Summern?
Yes.
And Supervisor Ramberg? 13, yes, 6, no.
13 to 6, so that, that motion passes, supporting that Senate bill, that resolution. All right, we're going to move on to the very next resolution, which is Resolution Supporting the CARE Act Proposed by Congressman Tom Tiffany Related to Amending Section 412 of the Immigration Nationality Act. Do we have a motion? Supervisor Shirley, second Supervisor Carlson, who would like to kick off our discussion Supervisor Carlson?
I requested everyone vote yes. This gives just a little bit more teeth in that they are required to ask us, and we're allowed to say no. And it's a pretty simple bill. Municipalities are allowed to say no if they don't want or can't afford to have refugees put into their area.
Supervisor Leef?
I'm opposed to this because I think the prospect of us deciding who can come here and who can't in front of a government body such as a board that changes consistently, it's, it's not who we are. As people in St. Croix County, I think of the refugees that came from Ukraine and settled in North Hudson, and they have children in school, they're learning English. He's a plumber, was a plumber in Ukraine, and he's planning to use that trade here. So would we, what if a board said, "Nope, sorry." So, I mean, we are a country of people that should help each other, and this has been filled with misinformation conflating the southern border refugee, southern border immigrant crisis, which there is one, with refugees who are vetted. I'm voting no.
Other comments? Supervisor Anderson?
I mean, real simply, this is just kind of an expansion on the previous one, like Supervisor Carlson said with teeth. This just basically gives, again, closer to the people elected body a say in the matter. I fully support this.
Comments? Supervisor Hanson?
Yeah, this is not bringing it closer to home. This is making it farther away. If the governor decides that they don't want to have refugee resettlement, he can speak for the entire state, according to this. If this were to pass, then it takes away a community's ability to accept refugees. So it's doing the exact opposite of making it a community's choice to help people who are in dire need. So it's, it's doing something that truly is un-American, which is to be unwelcoming on a state level. So it's, it doesn't make sense. It's, it's being un-American. So it really should be rejected.
Other comments? Supervisor Cook?
I urge the rest of the supervisors to vote no on this. Decisions about refugee resettlement are not in the local government purview, per our U.S. Constitution, so please vote no.
Supervisor Shirley?
I've heard that comment over and over again, that it's not in our purview, it's not in our purview, but the federal government, when they're looking at these bills and having the support of the local governments behind them, makes a big difference. And having voices behind whatever bill, whether it's the one we just voted on or the one in the House of Representatives, I think that, you know, having this, what we just voted on for the, for the state, now looking at the federal government, but that's where that decision is ultimately made. So it's an extension of what we just voted on, except for it makes the federal government more accountable on that front.
Supervisor Teljon?
Yes, it's my belief the Constitution doesn't permit Congress to delegate authority over refugees to state and local government. I think this is, I don't know what I think anymore. This is, to me, it seems like it's a partisan bill, and we're a nonpartisan body, and we shouldn't be even addressing this at this point.
Supervisor Lind?
Thank you, Chair. When we believe that the federal government has our back at the local level, we are mistaken. We, as a body, are responsible to our constituents, to be the wall that says, "You know what? We need a little bit more teeth. We need a little bit more accountability. This is our responsibility at the county level." I get that, you know, we're just the local level. We're just sitting in these chairs because we're, we're just pretty, we're just whatever. We are not just sitting in these chairs because we want to. We are elected into these chairs to do what's right for this county, and this is right for this county.
Supervisor Teljon?
The majority of my constituents have contacted me, and they oppose this. That's the majority of my constituents, so I'm doing what's right with my constituents.
Other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the motion to approve the resolution requesting, or supporting, sorry, the CARE Act proposed by Congressman Tiffany.
Supervisor Osness?
Yes.
Supervisor Counter?
Yes.
Supervisor Hanson?
No.
Supervisor Shirley?
Yes.
Supervisor Teljon?
No.
Supervisor Carlson?
Yes.
Supervisor Barkalow?
Yes.
Supervisor Swanepoel?
No.
Supervisor Van Summern?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Fiedler?
Yes.
Supervisor Otino? Supervisor Burning?
She's going random. Yes.
Supervisor Adams?
Yes.
Supervisor Cook?
No.
Supervisor Leef?
No.
Chair Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Lind?
Yes.
That motion passes fourteen to five. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our last business item, which is a resolution requesting an immediate pause on refugee resettlement in St. Croix County. Do we have a motion to approve Supervisor Tel, uh, Barcalow? Supervisor Carlson, Second? Okay, who would like to start this discussion out? Supervisor Burning?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for allowing me to attend this meeting remotely while I'm away on business. So I've heard a lot, I've, I've received a lot of emails. Some of them have brought up concerns that are valid from both sides regarding whether they're for or against this resolution. And I'd like to take a moment and explain why I support this resolution and why I don't find it to be fitting on the extremes of either side of being racist or xenophobic or afraid of folks from other nations. And on the contrary, I don't believe that this resolution is a statement, uh, you know, against, um, or, or being against this, I don't think is a statement of, uh, you know, being anti-American and not being welcoming. There's some things that have happened over the last few years in this nation that have caused a cascading effect to impact. Everyone isn't a multimillionaire or a billionaire, and it has to do with inflation, it has to do with the inability to find affordable housing, and I'm not talking about this fake term of workforce housing that gets thrown out there, which is a slang term for apartment buildings and putting people in stack housing. I'm talking about people being able to live the American dream that are here already. Folks that have worked hard, whether it's me, and you're married with four kids, or you're my neighbors that are retired, or neighbor that have kids in college with tuition costs that are unbelievably expensive. We have so many cost issues with this in our nation right now, that being able to put a, a helping hand out to any war-torn countries and refugees on top of a porous southern border that is completely overwhelming our public safety, our health and human resources in a drug pandemic, and I will call it a pandemic because it has impacted every spot in this country, or I guess an epidemic would be in this country. We have so many people that are struggling to make ends meet. The time that we came out of the last three years, we don't have breathing room to be able to help others at this time. I have many immigrant families that I represent in my district. They are amazing, wonderful people. Everyone that I've had discussions with loves this country, love being here, self-sustaining. There was even a, a couple that we had planned on helping open a business here locally to deliver a product that isn't normally available in the Hudson area. I really think that we need to encourage our federal government and our elected officials to get the, the southern border under control, to get the influx of illegal immigration under control, in which there is a vast amount of human trafficking. There is weed and marijuana laced with fentanyl that is impacting our ability to deliver government mandated, or state mandated, services. So asking for a pause is not racist. Asking for a pause is not xenophobic. Asking for a pause is being good stewards of our area for our taxpayers. And I think that once we are able to get some of this inflation and unaffordable housing and the ability to buy groceries at reasonable cost, and people that are living here currently, including those that have migrated here legally and are staying here legally, I think we owe it to our citizens and the residents that reside here legally to get some of this under control and put a pause on it. And then, once we are in a better spot, not necessarily a great spot, but once we are in a better spot, very much open arms, welcome them in and help them assimilate into this country and become Americans. So that's why I said this is not to stop refugee resettlement indefinitely. It's an ask for a pause until our federal government can get their act together and get some of these everyday issues that our neighbors are seeing under control. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Comments? Supervisor Hanson?
Yeah, I thought this was to be a pause so that we could improve communication and have a better conduit to bring refugees into the area and, and have communities welcome them in a, in a more organized manner. I didn't know that it was a pause so that we could fix the problems on the southern border. That's scary. But that, notwithstanding, I'd like to make an amendment. I would like to make an amendment that we, that we have a sunset on this that would make it truly a pause, because this isn't a pause, this is a prohibition, that we, and, and I'd ask our Corporation Counsel how to word this, I'd like this to sunset at 24 months, so that it's truly a pause, that we pause this for 24 months. And I don't know if it's the first whereas, or, and this would make it palatable, we go the 24 months, I can vote for it, although I question some of the wording and the wherestes, they're kind of hearsay, but I guess I could live with it. 24 months is a back door, then it's truly a pause. It brings us to the last meeting of the next term. We can't bind another county board, however, most of the next county board is sitting at this table. So I'm looking for a second.
Sir, Second Supervisor Teljon? So the motion on the floor is to amend the pause resolution to add a specific timeframe of 24 months, as opposed to indefinite pause.
Chair.
Who's waving? Wait, I'm sorry. Supervisor Van Summeren, you had had your hand up previously, would you like to speak? And, and this is regarding the amendment to the resolution?
Okay, mine was not regarding the amendment, mine would be the other. So if we wanted to take care of the amendment?
Okay, thank you, thank you. Who was waving their hand? Supervisor Burning?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I agree with Supervisor Hanson that it should not be an indefinite pause from now until the end of eternity, but for us to put a timeframe on it, I think is asking for that pause to be in a timeframe. If there are things not under control within 24 months, why in the world would we want to presume anything or resume anything that we don't have things under control? So I, I'm against this amendment.
Supervisor Carlson?
One thing, this is a pause to improve communications, because it allows us to communicate if we want it or not, so that's why I like it. I support Supervisor Hanson's sunset clause of 24 months. The board is more than capable to bring it up to topic in 24 months. Also, we'll know by then if the CARES Act passes or not, we'll have more information. So I have no problem with the idea of a sunset of 24 months.
Supervisor Otino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I disagree with the 24-month statement in the amendment, because if you look at it, we already have a 24-month time limit on it. Each and every one of us here, in 24 months, will be up for election, and it'd be a new board, and the new board can make the decision after that. I, I disagree with the amendment.
Supervisor Shirley?
I typically agree with time-framed pauses, but I think in this situation, I agree that we can't put a time limit on it. If, if we pass this today the way that it is, and a future board, 24 months, 36 months, 48 months, whatever it is down the road, decides that they want to do something different, then we make a new resolution and we change it at that time. We're not going to be bound to a, to a time limit that's on there, just because we want to look like we're opening it up further down the road, when we can do that at any time.
Supervisor Anderson?
I mean, instead of a 24-month time period for this just, like, ending, could we say something like, to be reviewed, to, say, the St. Croix County Board of Supervisors will re-review this resolution at the April 2026 County Board meeting? And just not say, so if we review and decide to, decide, or, May 2026, thanks, Ken. Yeah. If, if you're, if the board reviews it and decides to not take any voting item, then it would stay active, but then at least you would still review it at that time, but it doesn't necessarily automatically cancel if you don't pass it again. So I'm, I'll, I'll, let's, an amendment to the amendment. That's allowed.
So there's a proposed amendment to the amendment to, uh, state that it will be reviewed in May of 2026, as opposed to a standard 24-month period.
I'll second that.
And second by Supervisor Burning. So now we're at the amendment to the amendment. Supervisor Carlson?
My question to Corporation Counsel, can we force an agenda item two years from now?
Yes.
Could we just let that be a friendly amendment? I can, I can live with it.
Technically, there's no friendly amendments, but I think Chair Long's probably going to say this, you should vote on the amendment to the amendment. So if everybody is voting on Sean's amendment.
Other comments on the, Supervisor Cook?
I respect the attempt to create some kind of timeline for this pause, because overall, I think the resolution is quite vague and really doesn't have any metrics. But because I'm opposed to the resolution itself, I, I cannot support the amendment because I just don't think we should even be supporting this pause, so I will be voting no.
Other comments? Supervisor Van Summeren?
Thank you, Chairman. Are we just doing a redundant thing? Does the word pause not mean that, pause sometime in the future, it could come up again? Sometime in the future, it may not come again, up again, but, but it gives us that option. So, so is an amendment on the amendment necessary, and is the amendment even necessary? Because the, the term pause says exactly what we're trying to say with, with teeth or without teeth. So I think as written is probably okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Anderson?
I think the, and my intention with, with the amendment is just, it kind of encompasses, I guess, except for the individuals who just don't like the resolution as stands, which obviously is, is what it is, but it kind of makes most, pretty much, what I understand, most people comfortable with the resolution, whether you want a timeline or not, because you still have that built-in, like, renewal. It doesn't just, or review, not, just, it doesn't just slip, but it also doesn't, it doesn't slip either way. You don't forget that it's enacted, but you also, if you fail to do something in May, it doesn't, like, go away.
Supervisor Hanson?
Sure, this is a matter, it's not just semantics, it's, it's a matter of, of using the language correctly. If we're gonna, if we're gonna call it a pause, we, a pause is you stop momentarily and then you go again. If we mean for it to be a prohibition, then we should change the entire name of the, of the resolution to a prohibition, because it's not meant to be a prohibition. So let me just, let me tell you why, you know, I, I, I'm kind of for this, and this is, this is gonna actually probably rankle some of my friends. I was watching, because I listen to the videos that people send me and, and the audios and the, I read what people send me, and a guy who I, I used to talk to quite a bit sent me a, 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 what do you call it, a video blog that he does, Mr. Kraft, and he did an interview, or he sent an interview with Congressman Tiffany, and Tiffany actually defined this pause, that, and I think it was his suggestion. And he brought it up, and I think the question was put to him, can a county stop refugees from coming? And he said, he just came short of saying we can stop. He said, well, no, but you can pause it. Well, I, I think what he meant to say is pause is a temporary measure, and I think a temporary measure ought to have a back door. You should say you can pause it for a period of time, and you should define that period of time. And that's where I'm drawing this from, is you should define the period of time. So it's not a prohibition. If it was to be a prohibition, we should call it that.
Supervisor Carlson?
Yeah, another Corporate Counsel question. If we sunset it, and then, could the sunset happen without the board even knowing or realizing in two years? Or are they informed?
I think if you worded the way Supervisor Anderson worded it, where you could add to line 53, that, so it would read that there be an immediate pause on the placement of any refugees within St. Croix County, and that the County Board of Supervisors will review this at the May 2026 County Board meeting, then Administrator Witt and whoever the new chair is will know that that needs to be on the agenda for May 2026, and so it's less likely to be missed if you put a date certain in there versus just 24 months.
Thank you. Then I support the amendment to the amendment. Supervisor Lind?
Thanks, Chair. I do believe that what Supervisor Anderson has said is effective, because the pause, once we review it, that doesn't just end it. What Supervisor Hanson was saying was it just goes away, and that's, that's a dangerous mentality, because none of us have a glass ball that we can look into and see what's going to happen in two years. We, we just don't, and we've watched the decline of this nation over the last several years, and we need to be, we need to be conservative on, on believing that, you know, anything past two years, we should be fine. I think we need to do the pause with a review. I can support that, but definitely not that it would just go away.
Any other final comments? So let's go ahead and vote, or Supervisor Otino, go ahead.
Yeah, can I ask for clarity here? Because if we vote on the amendment to the amendment, I dislike these so, oh, sorry. If we vote on the amendment to the amendment, and that passes, and then we vote on the amendment, and that doesn't pass, what happens?
Then we're back to the main motion on the resolution.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Right. Okay, so we're voting on an amendment, Supervisor Anderson's amendment to Supervisor Hanson's amendment, that will dictate that the board will re-review the pause resolution in the May 2026 Board meeting, so we've got a specific timeframe. So that's what we're voting on right now, to amend the, the resolution to that. Okay, I think we're ready?
Supervisor Teljon? Supervisor Shirley?
Yes.
Supervisor Hanson?
Yes.
Supervisor Counter?
Yes.
Supervisor Osness?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fiedler?
Yes.
Supervisor Otino?
Yes.
Supervisor Carlson?
Yes.
Supervisor Barcalow?
Yes.
Supervisor Swanepoel?
Yes.
Supervisor Van Summeren?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Lind?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Leaf?
No.
Supervisor Cook?
No.
Supervisor Adams?
Yes.
Supervisor Burning?
Yes.
16 to 3.
And that amendment passes 16 to 3. So now we're back to the First Amendment, which is now the Second Amendment, if that makes any sense. The First Amendment has been amended to the Second Amendment, so we're now voting on the resolution with the amendment that clarifies the pause will be revisited in May of 2026.
Technically, we're not on the main motion yet. We're on the motion from Supervisor Hanson to review this in 24 months. So what you're voting on right now is whether or not to review the resolution in 24 months, which is obviously contradictory to the second amendment that just passed, but you still need to vote on it.
But I thought the-
I, yeah, my amendment was to his amendment. So, so we'd be voting on the amendment as amended.
So as long as everybody understands, then, we're back to the main resolution to-
So my understanding- I'll give you my, my layman's interpretation. So Supervisor Hanson wanted to put a timeframe in of two years. Supervisor Anderson modified that not to be two years, but to be date-specific to May of 2026, and that it would be reviewed by the County Board. So still, a time-limit amendment, which is what Hanson wanted, but now instead of 24 months, it's date-specific with a review.
Yes.
Point of inquiry, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Burning?
And that amendment creates a review and not necessarily a falloff, correct? So it doesn't automatically sunset, it was amended to just be reviewed?
It's a, it's a time limit, subject to whatever County Board action takes in April, or May of 2026.
I guess-
So, okay, so expires then, and the County Board would need to take action, either to renew the resolution and ask for another pause, or not take action and it dies.
Yeah, because I think Anderson's motion was to sunset it. So I think Hanson's, yeah. Hanson's motion was to sunset it, and Anderson date-specific with a, a specific date for review of that. So I still think there's a sunset.
That was not my intention, no. It's just a review without a specific sunset. So if it was, if it was on the agenda and the County Board skipped it, it would still stay active. I believe that was, that was my, was- Sorry, if they, if they tabled it, per se, let's put it that way. Yeah, but if they decided to do nothing, then it would stay active.
I think it can try to clarify that. I think the language that I read would put it on the May 2026 agenda. So it'd be on the agenda regardless, and what the County Board does with it at that time is what the County Board does with it at that time. There'll be some form of resolution or discussion item on the May 2026 County Board agenda, so it will be discussed one way or the other. And so I think what you're voting on now is the motion to approve the resolution requesting an immediate pause on refugee resettlement with the amendment that it be reviewed by the County Board in May 2026. That's what we're voting on now.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Is that clear to everyone? We're voting on the original motion as amended.
We're just voting on the amendment, not the motion, or the resolution.
We're gonna vote on the original motion with the amendment.
The original resolution with the amendment. I had one question.
Hold on. Supervisor Leaf?
So I have a question for Corporation Counsel. So if we, if this resolution passes, it's really, it doesn't have any, we don't have any jurisdiction over pausing if, if the resettlement could still continue because this is not our purview. So we're doing all these calisthenics for a symbolic resolution, right?
Correct. Refugees could be resettled in Eau Claire County tomorrow, and this resolution would not have any teeth to do anything about it. It's, it's a recommendation to all the entities that, you know, are at the end of the resolution to send it to.
Point of order?
Supervisor Carlson?
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a first and a second on Supervisor Hanson's that it seems like we're ignoring by going straight, so that's still on the floor, so we should vote that up and down. It occurs to me it might be easier to have two amendments, one saying it sunsets, and another one saying it has to be brought to the board that day. And that might satisfy all of them and just be a lot clearer.
Technically speaking, you're not supposed to have an amended, amendment upon the amendment. So we should have voted on Supervisor Hanson's amendment first, and then depending on what happened there, then Supervisor Anderson should have made him his amendment, and we should have voted on that. That's why there's confusion.
Counselor, if I withdrew my amendment and let Mr. Anderson stand, then that would solve everything.
Technically, based on Robert's Rules of Order, once the amendment is on the floor, it's the bodies. It's not, you can't withdraw it. And so-
I withdraw my withdrawal.
If we do this pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order, we already voted on Supervisor Anderson's amendment. Technically, we should vote on your amendment, and whether that passes or fails, then we would be back to the original resolution.
I encourage everybody to vote against my amendment, because it'll be very confusing if you vote for it.
Supervisor Van Summerin?
Thank you, Chairman. So let's make this clear. So if we vote yes on this, what are we saying?
Right now, you would be voting on Supervisor Hanson's amendment-
Right, 24 dropped dead.
To have the sunset provision of 24 months.
Right.
And he is now saying, he is asking everybody to vote against that because it's somewhat confusing based on the amendment everybody approved that Supervisor Anderson just proposed.
Okay, so no vote on this one would bring up Supervisor Anderson's. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else need any clarification on what we're voting?
Yes, I want to make sure that Anderson stands. We vote yes, or no matter how we vote on this, Anderson stands, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Now you know why I really dislike amendments to amendments.
I think we all kind of feel the same way right now. Okay, right now, we are gonna vote on Supervisor Hanson's amendment. And I'd love to do a voice vote, but I think we need to go through roll call, please.
Supervisor Ramberg? Supervisor Ramberg?
Give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Oh, down.
Supervisor Ramberg voted no with a thumbs-down motion.
Supervisor Van Summerin?
No.
Supervisor Swanepoel? Supervisor Barcalow?
No.
Supervisor Carlson? Supervisor Teladon?
No.
Supervisor Shirley?
No.
Supervisor Hanson?
No.
Supervisor Counter?
No.
Supervisor Osness? Vice Chair Fiedler?
No.
Supervisor Otino?
No.
Supervisor Burning?
No.
Supervisor Adams?
No.
Supervisor Cook?
No.
Supervisor Leaf?
No.
Chair Long?
No.
Supervisor Anderson?
No.
And Supervisor Lind?
No.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, I believe, we're back to the original motion to approve the resolution as amended by Supervisor Anderson to provide the board to revisit the issue in May of 2026. Supervisor Teladon?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to remove lines 35, 36, and 37 from there, because we have no idea what the costs are. There's been no explanation of costs. I think it's superfluous to this resolution.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion to eliminate lines 35, 36, 37? Is that correct? And a second. Discussion. Line 35, 36 basically is saying that we're concerned about refugees being resettled without necessary long-term funding sources to sustain their integration without reliance upon taxpayers of the county.
There's been, oh, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Teladon?
Yeah, there's been no discussion on the costs. We have no idea what the costs are. There might be zero costs, or it might be $10 cost, might be $5,000 cost. We don't know. But there's been, it's just innuendo that there is cost. I don't think it should be part of the resolution.
Supervisor Carlson?
I think the, they should stay, because the important point in there is that we're concerned about the costs, so there should be a discussion. That is the concern, taxation without representation, and/or if we can afford it or not. So I think those are very valid points.
Supervisor Adams?
Thank you, Chair. One cost out there is the cost of translators. Right now, we're struggling to find translators for the multitude of languages that are going on, and it's really impacting our judicial system right now in the county. So that is a real cost.
Supervisor Burning?
Yeah, I, I do agree that 35 through 37 really projects a lot of just hyperbole that we cannot quantify on a future expense necessarily. When I was looking at the original resolution that was passed around, it was full of superfluous statements saying things like it will cost, and it's going to damage the community, and some things like that. So I don't know, I think I would support removing this part. We already have in there in lines 39 through 40, that St. Clair County has already stretched our levy capacity, and going, you know, basically to referendum to override the levy. So I think pulling this part out is, I could agree with that, I could be agreeable to that, I will be agreeable to that, but I'll be voting yes to, to remove that language.
Other comments? Supervisor Hanson?
And the concern about language is partially covered under lines 30 through 33. So that, that does, the cost of that is, is partially covered, so it kind of assuages that concern.
Supervisor Van Summerin?
Thank you, Chair. Speaking for the majority of the people who have talked to me in the past week, or, and have emailed me, I think we ought to leave it in there, because one of the great concerns is funding. And, and, you know, we've spent a lot of money in the past. We're looking for additional money for, for police and for other judicial people, and I think that's weighing heavy on the number of people in my, in my jurisdiction. And just about unanimously, the people who spoke to me said, "We need to guard that cost, because our cost, pretty soon it's going to be too expensive to live in St. Clair County, and the refugees won't want to live here either because of the cost." So I, I think that should stay.
Supervisor Shirley?
The more and more I read that paragraph, 35 through 37, I think I agree that it does need to stay, because I think that that is the essence of what we're really doing with this resolution, is that we are concerned about the costs. We're not putting in there that some outlandish number that we don't know, we're not putting forward that it's going to cost us in five years, and two years, and three years. We're just saying that we're concerned about the cost. So I don't think that taking it out, leaving it in, gives the impression that that's what this is really about. That's what we're concerned about. That's why we're moving forward with this. Taking it out, it can be inferred by the other ones, but we're actually stating it in that one.
Supervisor Barcalow?
Just kind of remembering one of my constituents sending us an email regarding, I think it was St. Cloud County, starting to resettle refugees. They were at levy limits, and then the following year, they were a million over levy, and then I think it was shortly after that, it was something along 10 million over levy due to the cost overruns for resettlement. So I would recommend that we keep that in.
Supervisor Burning?
Is there better language that we could use? And this question's directed to Corporation Counsel. It just, it assumes that if a refugee comes here, we are going to take county funding sources to sustain their integration. Now, I get taxpayers, if it's federal, if it's state, I'm with you on that. Is there, I don't know, I guess you drafted this, right Heather?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, so I mean, it does seem very superfluous, but at the same time, I guess this is the reason for this, is because of the, because of our resources being taken. Okay, I'll lower my hand.
Supervisor Shirley?
To that, I would say that we're, the last sentence in there about reliance upon the taxpayers of the county, we're not saying tax or county funding necessarily, because we don't know. We're saying taxpayers of the county.
Okay, any other comments before we vote on this amendment? Okay, so the amendment is to eliminate lines 35, 36, and 37 from the amended resolution. Ready to vote?
Supervisor Burning?
No.
Supervisor Otino?
No.
Vice Chair Fiedler?
No.
Supervisor Osness?
No.
Supervisor Counter?
No.
Supervisor Hanson?
Yes.
Supervisor Shirley?
No.
Supervisor Teladon?
Yes.
Supervisor Carlson?
No.
Supervisor Barcalow?
No.
Supervisor Swanepoel?
Yes.
Supervisor Van Summerin?
No.
Supervisor Ramberg?
No.
Supervisor Lind?
No.
Supervisor Anderson?
No.
Chair Long?
No.
Supervisor Leaf?
No.
Supervisor Cook?
Yes.
Supervisor Adams?
No.
Fails 15 to 4, yeah.
Okay, that, that amendment fails 15 to 4. Okay, now we're back to the original resolution as amended by Supervisor Anderson's inclusion of a date of review of May 2026. Do we have any final comments? Are we getting, okay, Supervisor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. Over the last few months, we've heard a lot of comments, and I do want to thank everybody for taking the time to send public comment. We've received a lot. And so I know it takes time out of folks' days, so I appreciate the feedback. But a lot of those comments that we've heard have been focused on the decline in our country, issues about the problem on the southern border, issues with crime. And then on another note, someone will say, "Well, that's not related to refugees." Well, we're talking about a refugee resettlement resolution. We're not talking about illegal immigration. I, I'm opposed to illegal immigration. I think we need to solve that issue. But we're talking about a legal process where refugees are brought to our country, they're vetted, they're screened, it's a process- It's a process that brings people from different backgrounds to our amazing, amazing place. So, you know, I think that our country was built in part from refugees, from people who were seeking freedom from persecution. Many of our ancestors came as a refugee here. And so I would ask folks to vote no on this pause resolution today because please don't diminish our role in the world as a country of opportunity, of freedom, that welcomes people who are looking for a better life. Please vote no.
Supervisor Carlson?
There is nothing in this pause that prohibits the NGOs or the state to request that they put refugees in their area and let us reconsider it in the future. But we want to pause the process that was done incorrectly according to the law up till now. So it's a pause to keep this from happening. In the future, it can come up any time, and we might decide then to welcome the refugees. But we want it done legally, and we want to have a voice. And the pause gives us that voice.
Other final comments? Supervisor Teljon?
Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless tempest toss to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door. That's on the Statue of Liberty.
And please, the public, please refrain from commenting. I believe Supervisor Hanson, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, you know, it might not be something that the federal government is going to pay a lot of attention to, but they're going to notice. And the idea that we want better communication is critical. Couple of different levels of government are going to notice this. One thing that I've always talked about, the very first orientation that I had when I was first elected, they said, you know, there's a real division between policymakers and administration, and you need to follow that. And then I've noticed a lot of times that there's administrators who are making policy, and I've said, well, this isn't good. And that there's, and that there's elected people who are getting involved and stirring the pot, trying to do, trying to do operations. And that's not good either. Here we had a person, you know, in Eau Claire County, who was not elected, who was making policy, and has caused an enormous amount of problems for people in a huge wide area. The good thing that can come from us passing this is for elected people and administrators up and down the scale in hundreds of municipalities to say, well, there's one more municipality, St. Croix County, that agrees, we need to pay closer attention to this and have better communications with federal government. We need to pay attention to what the law is so that if this thing does come down, we have to do it correctly. And I think that's something that's good. And if it, and if it helps, even though we have no bearing under law to have influence over the resettlement of refugees, passing this, I think, is sending a good message. So I'm going to vote for it.
Supervisor Burning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a couple of things I'd like to address, if you don't mind. First and foremost, I agree, the Statue of Liberty has that statement. However, the Statue of Liberty was erected at a time where there weren't 47 different law enforcement, or whatever it is today, dozens and dozens of law enforcement agencies overseeing the movement of the people of the country. There wasn't massive, massive bureaucracies that people have to go through and jump through hoops to settle on a farm, or come to this country and create a business. There wasn't Health and Human Resources, you know, Health and Human Services divisions that are here to oversee and make sure that they were healthy and financially stable. The Statue of Liberty statement was there when people were coming here, and truly liberty and freedom was at its utmost during the time of this country, especially in the beginning of the founding of this country. Granted, there are a few people that didn't have it. We worked on that. But right now, we're using taxpayer resources to resettle people. And my brother looking at trying to buy a home, I've got friends that are looking at trying to buy new homes. It's not affordable. The other thing is that the, the symbolic resolution comment, I am 100% in symbolic resolutions. If it's just for show and fluff, and it ain't going to do anything to influence legislative policies, or how Department of State or federal government agencies function, I think we should be voting on it. I also don't think that we should be voting on, which we can't anymore, those referenda that go to ballot that are non-binding. This resolution, however, does point to the fact that our county board, if this passes, is asking certain divisions to get their act together and put a pause on this until that happens. So I don't find this to be a symbolic resolution. I find it to be something that our governing body is voting on to put in the record to show that we are for a pause on this until we get our act together. And as far as the Constitution has come up several times in this conversation, and I will tell you, there are, there are going to be resolutions that I would like to bring up regarding the Constitution, Mr. Chair, and some of the things in conduct that have happened in the last three and a half years in this country that I want to get to the bottom of, and these will be resolutions I have put forth. So yes, the Constitution being mentioned, we need to follow it. We need to find out why it wasn't being followed over the last few years. So with that being said, I am for this resolution as it stands, and I hope, Mr. Chairman, that our body passes it and can pass it on to other areas of government and agencies to take into consideration. Thank you.
Other final comments? Final comment, Supervisor Hanson?
Just the one thing that I forgot to say. In terms of cost, I asked the county administrator to put together an accounting of what this process has cost us. This, this is just a show. This is a pageant. This is us asking the federal government not to do something they have a right to do. Our county government has spent $10,000 holding this meeting, writing three resolutions for us to vote on, that will have probably almost no effect whatsoever other than making everybody in this room have an emotional response to us doing this. $10,000 is a lot of money for what we're doing. I want to say that I have an opposite opinion of Supervisor Burning, that this body should focus on those things that we have control over. We should do the business of St. Croix County, and only the business of St. Croix County. Doing political acts for the purpose of making a statement is a waste of the taxpayer money. $10,000 has been spent here, and I can't understand, truly, I can't understand why, because we will have no impact on immigration. It's not the business of St. Croix County. Thank you.
Any other comments? Going once, twice? Okay, we're going to vote on the amended resolution.
Supervisor Counter?
Yes.
Supervisor Lind?
Yes.
Supervisor Leaf?
No.
Chair Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Hanson?
Yes.
Supervisor Teljon?
No.
Supervisor Barcalow?
Yes.
Supervisor Shirley?
Yes.
Supervisor Carlson?
Yes.
Supervisor Adams?
Yes.
Supervisor Cook?
No.
Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Supervisor Burning?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fiedler?
Yes.
Supervisor Otino?
Yes.
Supervisor Osness?
Yes.
Supervisor Van Somrann?
Yes.
Supervisor Swanepoel?
No.
Supervisor Ramberg?
Yes.
And that motion passes 15 to four. So maybe it's time we put this issue to bed for a little while, and so we can save some of that $10,000. I'm sorry, I don't mean to comment. Any announcements? Supervisor Van Somrann?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Thank you, Corp Council, for all the work that you've done and those others who supported you in doing this. You reacted very quickly, and you did a very good job. Also, I'd like to thank Chair Long for the wisdom that he showed in closing the public comment tonight. We've all heard enough about this for perhaps the rest of my life, and maybe yours too. It was good to involve the public. We learned a lot from that. That's necessary. I think your call tonight was, was, was very prudent. Thank you.
If we have no other announcements, we are adjourned at 6:27. We'll see most of you next month.